Thank you for joining us. I will have you two introduce yourselves in just a second. But first, I'd like to, although I forgot to bring my canoe today, we are having the River Fest this Friday and Saturday, correct Administrator? And I encourage all of you and everyone watching from home to be there. We will be having a fabulous time.
It is. It's gonna be great.
It is. Okay. If you both can introduce yourselves and then please proceed with our Housing Committee update.
Sure. I am Amy Sanchez. I live in Ward Five. I am the Chair of the Housing Committee.
And I'm Kara Corshane and I live in Ward Two and I'm on the Housing Committee. So, we just wanted to provide an overview of what we'll talk about this evening. You know that a lot of you want to get to Lewiston Adult at Graduation, so we will make this as fast as possible. We will talk a little bit about the committee's purpose, which you all re-approved in April this year. We will talk about housing in Lewiston, just provide a brief overview. Housing costs are high and housing is sparse, so we want to provide you with the most current data for you to consider while you're making policy decisions related to housing. We have a couple of recommendations related to the rental registration program. We will talk a little bit about upcoming housing challenges that Lewiston and the rest of the state will be facing, some opportunities, and then give you an opportunity to provide some input on how you'd like us to proceed around some priorities and give you a chance to ask some questions. So, as you all approved in April of this year, our role is to review and advise the City Council on any housing issues facing the community. We are meant to recommend measures that would help improve the safety and quality of Lewiston's housing stock, including increasing the diversity of the types of housing that we have in Lewiston. We also are meant to review and advise funding-related decisions around housing programs, and that relates to a number of issues, including CDBG funds, you know, any kind of funding that you might take a look at. There will be some new funding that will be available through the passage of LD 2003, so those might be some opportunities that we could look at together. We are also meant to talk with you and review anything that you might make decisions around related to Lewiston's led-free-by-43 goals. We also, you know, everybody who gets a job description has the duties as assigned by their supervisor, so this is our duties as assigned by supervisor. But we are also meant to provide safe and healthy housing alternatives for current and future residents of Lewiston, regardless of socioeconomic status. That is part of our purpose in the ordinance that created us.
A lot of these numbers that we're gonna look at are actually from the Lewiston Tax Assessor's Office as of May of this year. So, when we look at the total Lewiston residential units, this is all units, one-family, two-family, three-plus. These are all units. So, we have a little more than seventeen thousand units in Lewiston. Of those, seventeen thousand, seven point six thousand are three-plus multi-unit. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's the number of apartments in the three-plus multi-unit buildings.
And that only uses five percent of Lewiston's residential acreage, whereas the one-and-two-family uses ninety-five percent of the residential acreage.
And we also wanted to note that the number of, you know, I think that a lot of what we talk about here in Lewiston are how many absentee landlords there are. And we wanted to note that there are forty-seven percent of the three-plus multi-unit buildings are Lewiston-owned. A lot more than that, and I know that you got the breakdown and the information that we sent along earlier this week or last week. More folks live in Maine at least, and it's only, it's a very small percentage that live outside of Maine. But it's, you know, of course, less than half of those multi-unit buildings owned by somebody who lives in Lewiston. And of course, the difference here is pretty stark, where ninety-one percent of the one-and-two-family units are Lewiston-owned. We, as I'm sure you know, these numbers are from the Maine Association of Realtors. Housing is really expensive right now. To purchase a median, single-family home, you know, kind of mid-range, mid-price is pretty expensive, and that has had a pretty significant increase year over year for a couple of years now. And within the last year, it was a twenty-six percent increase. We also know that the rent is really high. We have data from Maine Housing for Andrews-Coggan County and not for Lewiston specifically. The information that they got from Lewiston, they didn't get enough respondents to the survey that they had, so it is not, it was not statistically significant enough for them to be able to provide real data. So, we've provided you data for Andrews-Coggan County here.
And it's interesting to note that within Andrews-Coggan County, there's over sixty percent of the people that cannot afford just a two-bedroom unit. So, and that's according to Maine Housing.
And the, and I'm sure that you probably know this, but affordability is calculated by basically thirty percent of your housing costs. Should not, you should not pay more than thirty percent of your income toward housing costs. So, that's how they determine affordability. So, a couple of thoughts that we had about the rental registration program, because Administrator Hunter asked us to take a look at it. I know that you all had a presentation earlier this year, I think, about the rental registration program. And we received some of the same information that you did and had a conversation with city staff about it and talked about it as a committee and wanted to provide you a few ideas around that.
I mean, we know that there is conversation about a new platform or a new database using the rental registration, so it's kind of hard to make recommendations for something when we don't know what's gonna come up. My understanding, though, is that it seems the database we have may have a piece that can be used for rental registration. So, maybe, maybe not. So, some of our hopes are with rental registration, maybe connecting code violations and the rental registration. So, if a building has code violations or a lot of code violations, it would be nice to be able to see that and connect it into the rental registration so we can connect the building to the violations. That's one thought we had, just so it would help with inspections. It would help, it would help people who are renting to know what kind of maintenance is done on the building. As I said, the other thing would be to add inspections that are in question, 'cause if you have Section Eight, sorry. Maine Housing does an inspection. If you have, if you get GA, then the city does an inspection. So, depending on if you have assistance or no assistance, depends on who actually does the inspection for the units. And it would be, we think, nice to see who is doing the inspections for each of these units and maybe correlate that information.
And especially if there's overlap.
Yeah.
Because some of them look at the same things, some of them look at different things. And I'm sure that those of you who own buildings know that that can be pretty arduous.
Yeah. I mean, and the other thing is for the overlap, if we have several different divisions of the city doing the same thing, if we could complicate that information, it's something that could be a budget item, just depending on how much time we're actually spending. Are we duplicating our work? What are we doing? So, that's one thing. We'd also like to add Section Eight or GA, any kind of assistance to the rental registration, asking the owners, "Do you take this assistance? Would you take GA assistance? Would you take Section Eight assistance?" And there's lots of other assistance, BRAP. There is also Shelter Plus Care. All of these things, we could be asking the owners and putting that into the rental registration so that it's easily accessible.
So, a couple of upcoming opportunities and challenges that we see related to housing. So, I'm sure that all of you know about the passage of LD 2003. That creates a number of changes that will come before the Planning Board and before the City Council in the coming year. Staff have noted that they're waiting on guidance from a municipal association, and then they'll determine what is necessary to change in the current zoning. But basically, LD 2003 and another law that was passed, LD 1673, really create a number of opportunities to increase housing supply. We know that we have a really high demand, which of course keeps those costs really high. And every municipality that is a service center like ours is really facing some pressure around building more, making sure that there's more supply to meet the demand, and that can be really challenging. So, there are increases in density allowances, allowing for accessory dwelling units, and really helping, that would really help shift a little bit of the demand need. It's not going to change it massively, but as we know, at this point, every little bit helps around those pieces. LD 2003 also explicitly allows for the regulation of short-term rentals, which, you know, a lot of people know as Airbnbs. And in a lot of the state, Airbnbs are really contributing to the housing crunch. You know, in Portland, in coastal areas, a lot of folks are not able to live in the towns where they work because they've been priced out, and Airbnbs are part of that challenge. And so, part of what we've talked about as a committee is being proactive instead of reactive. I did a really cursory, not super-scientific search on Airbnb before I came here this evening, and there are about twenty in Lewiston. And that, I looked probably three or four months ago, and I saw like six to eight. So, it's getting up there. I think that as we become a place where we do a lot more economic development and as we have a lot more, you know, fun and interesting festivals, I think I was here a couple, maybe a month or two ago, and I think that you approved like seven or eight different fun festivals for people to go to, and I can imagine that that might become more of a draw for folks. And some of the Airbnbs that were listed were really nice and pretty cheap, and I could imagine that becoming more of a challenge. And so, in other municipalities across the state where they've been a little bit more reactive rather than proactive, they've had a lot of challenges around regulating that. And Rockland and in Portland are specific examples of that. The other piece that is really important for you all to be aware of is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. I asked some folks at Maine Housing to do some numbers, and twenty-two point four percent of Lewiston renters have received emergency rental assistance, and that's around the tune of about eleven point five million dollars. And I'm not sure if any of you have seen that there are significant changes to the program that were made as of June first. But they are, it's going to create a pretty immediate cliff for people. So, the number of months that you can get assistance has gone from eighteen to twelve. They've also changed the eligibility requirements from eighty percent area median income to fifty percent of area median income, which is a pretty significant drop. And now, they only cover rent, back rent, security deposit, and electronic, electronic, electric utility expenses. And they used to cover a lot more utilities than that. So, heading into winter, that could be a real challenge that some families are facing. And, you know, we don't know if families would go from having a home to not having a home or if maybe they would decide not to spend money on their prescriptions this month or, you know, not buy as much food and, you know, make some really difficult decisions like that. But that is going to impact probably a significant number of Lewiston families, and that's just something that you all should just be aware of as you're thinking through different policy decisions around housing. So, in January, you all had a strategic planning session where you talked about a number of your priorities as a council. And Administrator Hunter provided us with a list of your priorities. And that, I've listed a couple of them here. I have another side of them in just a moment. But just wanted to note that, you know, these are the priorities that you have, and we wanted to talk with you about what you would like us to work on. Our committee definitely noted an interest in looking at the unit density and required parking, and I know that that was part of a contract zone change that you just approved for choice. But, you know, thinking through just what would be useful to you, what kind of questions do you have, how we can be supportive of your agenda moving forward, but also keeping in mind that we are a, and a small but mighty team of eleven people who meet.
Meet once a month.
Once a month, for an hour to an hour and a half sometimes.
Yes.
Sometimes we end up having longer conversations. But staff have also noted that they want our input on how they, or how the city implements LD 2003. So, that is also something that we'll probably be taking a look at in the next year. But just wanted to give you an opportunity based on your priorities and anything else that you've heard about housing, either in your conversations with constituents or this evening, what kind of questions you might want us to take a look at or any other thoughts or discussion you have.
Thoughts or questions from the council? Counselor Jalina.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for that presentation, ladies. That was really good. One of my questions pertains to, it was, so when you talked about the Airbnbs and some of the regulatory things that have been put into place, like in Rockport, Rockland, I'm sorry, in Portland, and I think you had mentioned that there was like under a half a dozen, and then you recently looked and it had climbed to twenty. I'm curious to hear more about what kind of regulatory practice has been put into place, 'cause that's a pretty significant jump in a very small period of time. So, that was one of my questions.
I would have to get back to you on really the specifics, but I know that one of the issues is, tends to be around how much, you know, the municipality will want per Airbnb, you know, and is, you know, in terms of like a tax that they might put on people who have an Airbnb. You know, any kind of requirements that might relate to, you know, noise ordinances or something like that. But I can, I'll look more into it, but I know that those are some of the challenges that they, that other cities have had.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. I've had a few constituents reach out to me voicing concern about that, so I just was curious to get more information. Thanks for putting up those priorities that we had identified at our workshop. I'm wondering, has there been some collective or collaborative effort between the Housing Committee and the Shelter Committee? Because one of the priorities identified was indeed the Regional Homeless Shelters and Resource Center. So, I'm wondering what kind of collaboration has occurred to date?
We have not had any collaborations. The Ad-Hoc Shelter Committee has not contacted us, so, but we are definitely happy to assist in any way that we can, provide information.
We also, we've had a couple of conversations and some of the, one of the, Craig Sotomayor, who is on both, is on both committees.
The Chair.
So, we, we've had some conversations, but it's not been a really intentional interaction between the two.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Am I mistaken, or did the Shelter Committee ask for feedback from the Housing Committee? I thought I saw that on the agenda. Okay. I'll chat with the coaches. Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you very much for this report. I really appreciate it. I guess some of the things that, I would reiterate what my fellow Counselor Jalina said about, you know, collaboration between the Ad-Hoc Committee on Homeless and what you guys are doing. I think that's a good conversation that needs to be had. I'd also, one of the things that I would be interested in learning a little bit more about and what we can do possibly is more owner-occupied units, particularly apartment buildings. I think that when we have an owner-occupied apartment building, we see a lot more care in that neighborhood, honestly, and the use of that building, the uptick, the keeping of the trash, everything. So, I think that's a really important piece. But I guess the most important thing to me would be to really get this language in on and a conversation with the Planning Board as well on the LD 2003. And really looking at where we're gonna be going with zoning on this, because when you look at some of this language, once we whittle this down, we're looking at, you know, the possibility of infill and really building, you know, a secondary unit. And I know that many of my constituents in the Sunnyside Park neighborhood, that is one of the things that they have conversations about, like, can we build more there? Can we make it? You know, can I take my house that maybe was a two-family unit before, somebody changed it into a one-family, back to a two-family? Those kinds of things, and really be able to have that housing availability. So, I really like to see that work when we're gonna really start focusing on that and make sure that we are part of that conversation also.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Clement.
Mr. Mayor. In order for us to know where we're going, I think it's important for us to know where we've been. And to that end, I would like to see a specific inventory of what is out there for housing. We all sit back, we, "Well, we need this variety. We need that variety. We want this. We want that." When I'm not sure that we have a definitive listing of what is available yet. So, I think that would be very important to help us as we paddle through this quagmire. It's, LD 2003 is gonna change the landscape. I know there was significant conversation about that as it went through the legislature. Maine Municipal was adamantly opposed to 2003, yet it got passed.
Yes.
For one, I think that the idea that Augusta can dictate to the entire state of Maine what the entire state of Maine needs is not necessarily a good thing. That's my opinion. But I worked in Augusta for twenty-one years and I saw it on a daily basis. They don't know what's best for every little looking cranny in Maine. But I think it would be important that we have an inventory. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that, but if we want to head somewhere, I think it would be helpful to know what we've already done.
That, we've talked about that as a committee as well. And, you know, part of our challenge is when that is really necessary, that, you know, we don't have the capacity for that. We can certainly support that. And, you know, one of the ideas that was floated about the rental registration program was actually, is there a reason why we wouldn't include single-family? And say, like, just registering your, you know, building with the city. And, you know, there are tax records around that. But then, you know, Dash, who's sitting here, also noted that there are probably a number of single-family homes that are rented, but they don't get caught into the rental registration program. But that sort of work would potentially create an administrative burden. And also, how else do you get an inventory on the housing in a city? I'm not sure.
I think it would be helpful, perhaps, if the committee were to come back with us with a recommendation that would be established, gives it a little more weight. We can direct staff to do things like that, whereas the committee probably doesn't have that authority. But I would think, just looking around, that there seems to be a consensus that something we need. So, if that comes back from the committee as a recommendation, we can push that forward. I know that housing everywhere in the state of Maine, I mean, watching the news before coming over here tonight, that was a major discussion on one of the channels. It is not an easy issue. Everybody, it's everybody's issue. It may be a little different from one town to another, but we do need to move. Like I say, in order to know where we're gonna head, let's find out what we need. And recommendations, I think, would be key. We can take those and we can push those out.
So, just have a quick question. When you say, I know, I know you want inventory, but when you say, "What we need," are you talking about people who are, you know, using BRAP? Or, I'm not sure how we would get to that number.
Well, I think the inventory of what we have.
Yeah.
I know that during our strategic planning session, we came up with a number of areas that we'd like to address. Lewiston, like it or not, has some image problems. I mean, you still hear people talking about Dirty Lou, and I think that's something that upsets everybody on this dais. One of the ways that we can perhaps change that is if we can raise the median income level within the city, but you've got to have the housing to do that. Somebody who's making two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars a year does not want to move into certain areas of the city. They'll live in places like Portland, Falmouth, send their kids to schools in Falmouth and Cumberland and some of these other places, recognizing, I don't know if they're recognizing rightfully or not, but they think they're making the right decision. So, I don't know what we have for housing stock out there. And I think in order to be able to get any sense of direction, that's a needed thing. I mean, once we know that, then I think we can make some determinations. If you could put up the priorities again. I think there might have been another slide in there that needed inventory.
Administrator Hunter, did you have something to add?
Going along this discussion, I know the committee had some raw data available in a spreadsheet. We are in the process of converting not only the assessing software, but the tax software, with the hopes that now we're bringing it up to a closer century than what we have currently, that we'll be able to extract.
I love that for you.
Extract some data on there. So, one of the things particularly I think that's missing, I think we have definitely more information on the multi-units. That, it's clearly that's available. I think it's the single-family home that has been absent. And to be able to kind of maybe delineate by number of bedrooms, maybe overall square footage, overall land and age, to kind of bucket that into a general housing price and look at it that way. I think this system may have more flexibility to do so. And going back to the rental registration and code is working on the TylerTech and an upgrade to the Intergov system that would hopefully allow for not only toggling documents together, but also having a citizen portal to be able to do, 'cause that's the piece that is absent in our current system. It's the last piece of rental registration that never got implemented because of technology challenges. So, we just had a meeting, I believe, two weeks ago to kind of move that forward and see what an upgrade, rather than abandoning that system completely, what does a significant upgrade look like? And does that achieve the goals that we're looking for instead of starting from scratch from a, in a whole different system? So, those two projects are in the works.
Thank you. Anything further, Counselor Clement?
Fine, Ms. Mayor. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. One of the things that I would like included with that inventory is a range of what rents are going for, what a one-bedroom is going for, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. Just to give us an idea of what housing costs are spread across the, you know, the different-sized families and stuff. I think that would be an important piece. It would also help us get an idea of needs.
And so, do you mean including that in the rental registration?
If possible, right. That would be the perfect place. I don't know how receptive landlords would be putting their rents out there, but anything that we.
Well, they gotta put them out there when they advertise it, so.
True, true, true. The other thing, and this is probably another one that would be hard to get a handle on, would be what the demand is on the different ranges from low-income, middle-income, and upper-income, to give us an idea of what to focus on going forward. forward. You know, if we're, if there's more demand in the middle than upper or lower, that's what we need to focus on. If it's pretty much spread across the spectrum, then we have that to focus on too. But I think that would be another big piece of it. Thank you.
Administrator Hunter, did you have something else?
Just kind of an independent thought. We've always looked at it from a housing inventory and what's out there and the benchmarks for rental and square footage. Is it worthwhile to consider doing some kind of public outreach to see if the economy, if the circumstances were different, what people are looking for in a house? Because we really haven't ever taken that poll to say, "Okay, I'm currently where I'm in, but if my median income changed, if my, whatever my situation, I would be willing, I would be more interested in looking at a four-bedroom and going from a condo to a house," you know, those types of things, that I think that may be, rather than looking at the current inventory, looking at the specific demand that people want. We know there's an overall demand out there, but we don't, it's one thing to say, "Okay, we have X amount of one-bedroom, X amount of two-bedrooms, X amount of three-bedrooms." We don't know what the demand is for a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom, to be able to look at it from a, you know, the opposite side of the question.
There was a study that Maine Housing did in 2019, which of course, the pandemic happened and there were a lot of, people changed what they wanted out of a house and where they wanted to live. And I don't remember if there's Lewiston-specific data for that, but I can check. But there, basically, the study found overall is that most people, including young people, including folks who are older, actually wanna downsize for the most part, and they wanna live in a service center. But I can definitely check and see if there was Lewiston-specific data, which is of course, at this point, you know, a couple of years old and there was a whole pandemic that has happened in there. But, you know, I do think that there are models, at least for that kind of survey.
And making sure we're getting the whole audience that we wanna get. You know, I'm not sure Maine Housing does the full reach that we would consider looking at doing. It's certainly a starting point, but, I mean, I'm even looking at maybe perhaps through the chamber or some of our employer-based organizations, can they survey some of their employees that are Lewiston residents and truly get a diverse response?
And to that, I would say also community organizations that, like St. Mary's Nutrition Center, that would be a great place to do a poll like that.
Counselor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again for the presentation. I have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if this is the right time or if you can answer them or not. Who came up with the year 2043 for the end of lead base? Anybody know that? Why such a long period? We've been doing this enough for almost 40 years, trying to get rid of lead.
It's expensive, yeah. I think it, is it in the comprehensive plan?
Is that where it is?
Counselor, I could take that on. With our $5.2 million lead grant that we've got, and you're right, we've been getting lead money for quite some time. There's sort of two pieces, and I haven't done the math or looked at my notes recently, but I wanna say it was about 65 years at the level of funding we've been able to secure. That's one piece. The second piece is that the program does not make it lead-free. It makes it lead-safe. So, if you go in there and you make it and they test it and it's great, but then somebody beats up the woodwork and all of a sudden, it's now a lead exposure again. So, it's, and under HUD regulations, we cannot make it lead-free. You'd have to, rather than just scraping and painting or covering it, you would have to take it out and do all the trim work for all the windows. So, it's, it's, it's a good question, and I wish I had a better answer. But those are some of the challenges.
Okay, thank you for that. The other thing I'd like to see a piece on is how we can make tenants responsible for their units. I mean, there's landlords out there that try to keep, maintain their buildings, then they have tenants that destroy the units. And there's not much they can do about it. And then they try to evict them and they're facing added costs for that, when they rightfully should be evicted. There should be some kind of a regulation in there saying, "Hey, you're gonna destroy it, you're getting evicted, you're going out now." This is, is a long-term, especially if it's in the wintertime, it's hard to get rid of a tenant that doesn't pay their rent, destroys the property, especially if they have a child. We gotta do something with that. The thing is, hang on one second. On the issue, and there again, I don't know if you can answer it or not, but adding units on lots, different housing units on these lots, it says, depends on the lot size, and there is a sunrise clause. I guess my question is, is how is the person that has that single-family home on either side of this property gonna deal with somebody putting three more units on that, in that residential area?
Are you talking about LD 2003?
Yes.
I think that that would be part of the conversation around the zoning with the planning board and the city council as well.
I wasn't sure if you could answer it, but.
I cannot. I think staff is waiting for guidance from Maine Municipal Association, and then I think that they would probably take it from there.
I'm trying to think what there was, something else. But I, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for having me.
Any further comment from the council? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One last question. Do you know what the percentage is of the apartments that are Section 8?
I don't.
There's no way to, I figured that we're state-based, it would be difficult to get that.
There's a lag in the, in the data that we tried to look up. I think that has something to do with COVID, I would say. So, there's a little like a gap.
Can we get rid of COVID, please?
I am all for it.
There, and it would also be, you know, we would have to combine Maine Housing's data and Lewiston Housing's data. But I think that we could probably take a look at it, especially because I think there's also generally a difference between the number of, so, let's say I get a voucher. I then have to find a landlord who is willing to rent to somebody with a voucher. And that landlord has to agree to only charge me the fair market rate rent that HUD sets. So, if I get, I look at a, you know, the fair market rate in Lewiston for an efficiency right now is $717. If that landlord can get $1,000 for that efficiency and not deal with somebody who they, you know, have stereotyped as like not being a responsible person or might trash the unit or whatever, they're going to go and rent it to the person who can pay $1,000, right? So, there's also the difference between the, you know, number of people who can actually use their voucher and the number of vouchers, you know, apartments that are accepting or have people, voucher holders in them.
Yeah, I think Lewiston Housing said something that there's like 120 people with Section 8 vouchers that can't find a place to live.
Exactly. And they've increased a bunch, you know, there are a lot of incentives. Like, if you sign somebody, you get $750. Like, if they, if you need to make changes to your unit, you know, you kick in 500, Maine Housing will pay up to $5,000 of those, of those costs. There are a lot of different ways that they've tried to incentivize landlords to take voucher holders. And in fact, voucher holders are often more reliable rent income because if that voucher holder loses their job, the housing authority's gonna kick in the rent regardless. But if I'm not a voucher holder and I lose my job, there's nobody to kick in my rent, you know? So, it's, there are actually ways that renting to a voucher holder is a more sustainable and safer investment.
And I think I heard that with the Section 8 vouchers, that if you bail on the landlord, you can't use a Section 8 voucher anyplace else until the landlord is whole.
Right, you can't owe money.
Right, so that is an incentive also. Thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Lashirebelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things before I get started. I just heard, I would encourage you to be careful on some of the wording. You just got done saying that landlords might stereotype an undesirable person to live in their dwelling. That's not a very fair statement at all. If I have an opportunity to rent my rent for $700 or $1,000, I really don't care if it's a moose living in there. That's $300 difference. It makes a huge difference on it. So, I owned, I was on the housing committee. I owned a bunch of apartments, and I understand the problems. The housing committee was very careful not to vilify landlords at the same time, because if we're gonna make a change, it has to be all of us working together. And broad statements on either side of saying that landlords are villainous or that the tenants are all bums, that's not a fair statement on the other side also. So, I would just encourage, be careful on some of the verbiage, because as a landlord, I got offended immediately when I heard that. Couple of questions is, who is on this committee? I know there are 11 people, so I appreciate, thank you. First of all, I should have started. Thank you for coming and informing us. I appreciate it. I would like to know who the members on the committee are. And we don't need a resume, just names, just who is on the committee. You made a statement earlier about Airbnbs. Are you suggesting that we be looking at a licensing or something to that effect for anybody that wants to start an Airbnb? And if so, it's a multi-question. If so, what would be the requirements for that? Is it just a fee? Are we gonna go inspect the building? Are there any kind of requirements? And is that something that's being done in other municipalities?
I think that the point was more that LD 2003 allows for that and specifically says municipalities may do this, because that was part of the challenge in a number of communities. And I think Counsel Jalinas asked us to look a little bit more into that, and we're not really prepared to provide a recommendation around that, but we're happy to talk it through with you.
Correct. I'm not expecting an answer right now. I guess I'm following Counsel Jalinas' comments and saying, "Yes, please look into it." I'm sorry, I wasn't expecting an off-the-cuff answer on that.
I mean, I'm pretty good at housing. I know my stuff, but I'm not quite there yet, so.
Fair enough, fair enough. You spoke about parking. I am a huge advocate of eliminating parking requirements, particularly in the downtown area. And I would urge the committee to look in that area. Example, you have a, we have some older stocks, you have driveways that are very long, and city was only recognizing the first two spots. I can put four or five cars deep, but by code, you're only recognizing the first two spots.
Yeah, that's hard.
That's extremely hard. So, that's a problem. I've dealt with it firsthand. If I can put five cars in there and because code, staff, whomever, was saying, "Well, it's unrealistic for the first car," the car that's already in to try to get out, it's the free market. There's parking available. It's the free market. If you don't want to be the first one in there and you have a parking, you can find another place to live or try to find another place to live. But now you're tying the hands of the landlord on who, how many units and how I can provide service to an already very crunched market that's there.
Yeah, and the moose who you would have rented to earlier probably doesn't even have a car.
Correct.
Right.
Correct. So, that takes, so parking is definitely an issue. I'm full support, so maybe having subcommittee, whatever, just looking at the parking and coming back with recommendations to the planning board or to here. Parking would definitely loosen up some of the restrictions for the downtown area. We just made some parking modifications for the, that large development that's coming in. I forget the.
Wedgewood. Yep, Choice Neighborhood.
Choice Neighborhood, thank you. So, I'd like to see this encompass more of it and address a parking issue. I only have nine more questions, ladies, so hold on for a sec. Owner-occupied buildings, great concept.
It is.
Interesting. How do we promote it?
Sorry.
Okay, so, one of the, one of the problems in promoting it, I, well, it's not a problem. How do we promote it to get somebody to stay in there? And are we offering somebody a discount for living in it? Are we giving them some kind of benefits or something like that? I know we can all make all these suggestions, but what is implementation? How do we implement something like that? I have some thoughts, but has the committee looked into that, promoting owner-occupied multi-unit ownership? How do we promote it?
Well, that was a council priority. So, I think that, you know, I'm not sure who made that suggestion, but I do know that there will be a program for that through choice in the coming years. I'm making the assumption that program guidelines, when you sign and say, "Yes, I will take this funding that is encouraging me to do this," will probably have some sort of covenant that requires you to stay in that, in that building for X number of years.
Correct, because you usually get some kind of a benefit from it, like the lead paint grant program. I think it's imperative to continue the lead paint, removing, fixing porches on the back, changing windows, painting it. It is, I don't wanna say, it's virtually impossible to make it a lead-free building unless you tear it down. There's no way. We can change it. As soon as you open and close windows and the walls, the lead is still there. Unless you tear these buildings down, it's virtually impossible. But it does make a big difference for the landlord. I personally have received lead grants on some of our buildings, and you have to own it for three years before you can sell it. You just can't take the money, fix it, and dump it. And we've done very well with it. So, that's definitely imperative for an older stock community to continue that. So, I for one find it important. And last but not least, the LD 2003. And I don't wanna get into debate on the pros or cons on it. I have questions in regards to when we have a state law and a municipal law, the municipal law cannot make it less stringent than the state law, but the municipal law can make it more stringent than the state law. I have grave concerns on the density and where we're gonna be putting it. And I, this is all new, so, and I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but we're talking to the housing committee on what are we looking at? And all of a sudden, people on Grove Street or people on Stetson Road or whatever the case may be can now have their one unit, and now I have three acres, or I have two acres, I could put three more houses behind the back of it. I know it says something about, well, we can have more stringent septic designs and well designs and requirements. I'm just concerned, and I don't wanna say I'm scared because I don't know, but I don't know what effect this is going to have. And I think we, as a municipality, have to be looking into what, how this is gonna affect us. So, as the housing committee, as a council, I'm going, "Give me some guidance, give me some understanding, educate me on what the law is coming and what is the suggestion." Obviously, this is gonna be a long-term, speaking with the planning board, speaking with staff, how are we moving forward? And I have a major problem with the state coming in and regulating our land in the city of Lewiston.
Noted.
I have very major problem. So, is there a loophole someplace that I can stop the state from coming in and making? So is there a loophole someplace that I can stop the state from coming in and making regulations?
That is above my pay grade on this, so I'm not really sure about that.
So just, but, yes, and I'm not done with that one, but we're going to move forward. And again, I appreciate you coming forward and making some of the recommendations, but I'd like to see, coming forward, this is our recommendation, this is how we think we can make those changes, not just coming saying, yes, we need, we need more one-bedroom units. I, I, when I had the apartment houses, was very eager to Lewiston Housing Authority, because they paid well for a four-bedroom or a three-bedroom, they paid better than a marketplace, but they pay horrible for some other stuff. And so it's, there's the difficulty as it lies, a one-bedroom, you're absolutely right, they weren't paying enough, but a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom, they're paying more than we can normally get off of the market. So there's, there's the disparity that comes in, so it makes, it makes it difficult. So landlords now are purchasing buildings that is astronomical, and the insurance is going up, the gas is going up, the, the list is long. For us to solve the crisis, we all have to work together. So thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments from the council? Counselor, please.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I know we've asked you to give us an idea of what everybody's looking for as far as rents, one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, or a bedroom. I think a good source for that would, would be Lewiston Housing Authority, and even Auburn Housing Authority. They'd have a better idea of how many people are looking for larger units or smaller units, because they're dealing with this all the time. A guy that's coming in off the street, you're not going to know whether, what he's looking for. So I'm just looking at these two, these two entities as somebody that can probably get some information from, or even some other towns. If you know that there's people out there that want to come to Lewiston, but they can't come to Lewiston because they don't have enough four bedrooms, or three bedrooms, or whatever, that might help too.
Sure.
It's just giving you some source of information.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Further comments from the council? Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate you serving the community, and thank you for coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening.